Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody here this morning. And we're glad to have Father Trent Moore here. He's with the Saint Stevens Episcopal Church. And welcome, Father, again. I met with you a couple of months ago. We enjoyed our meeting and glad to have you here today. And he's going to lead us in the invocation this morning. If we could all please rise and stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the invitation. Let us begin in prayer. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful, mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people the multitudes brought hither of our many kindreds and tongues. And do with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness; and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in thee to fail, all which we ask do Jesus Christ our Lord. And, oh, Lord, our governor, bless the leaders of our land, that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to our nations of the earth. Keep this nation under your care. We pray for the president and members of the cabinet. To governors of states, mayors of cities, and to all in administrative authority, grant wisdom and grace in the exercise of their duties. Good grace to your servants, oh Lord. And Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in the commonwealth of Virginia, in every city, in every country; and today we especially lift up our Board of Supervisors, Gary, Paul, Brad, David, Susan, Kathy, and Tom. Send the spirit of wisdom upon them, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people, do Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. I'd like to officially call to order our June 6th Copper River County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. And I ask Supervisor Gugino if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, where it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First up is the agenda. And I'll ask everyone else, but I think John has something he wants to add to the agenda this morning, our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask the Board to consider an addition to the agenda. That addition would be that the Board will consider appropriation of additional funds for the purchase of avgas and jet fuel with the offset to the appropriation from sale of fuel. This related to the airport budget. And I might suggest that it be under General County Business Item 4.03.
Anyone else have any other additions or deletions?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, I ask for approval of the agenda with the addition of 4.03 as recommended by the county administrator.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, good morning, members of the Board. We have four items on consent this morning. Under item A, the Board will consider acceptance and appropriation of a grant in the amount of $12,500 for Culpeper Human Services from the Virginia Department of Social Services. Under item B, the Board will consider acceptance of seven individual donations and approval of a budget amendment for those funds. The funds total $21,765.70 and are for the Parks and Recreation Department. Under item C, the Board will consider acceptance of a donation and a budget amendment in the amount of $2,000 for the Animal Services Department. LaBaron Rescue and Sanctuary donated the funds for veterinary services. And under item D, the Board will consider approval of categorical transfers for the school system for the FY '23 budget year. The transfers total $1,640,937 and will cover bus lease payments, employee bonuses, and transportation cost overages.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval of the minutes. Any changes to the minutes for the May 2nd AM or PM meetings? Or entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. We have one item of General County Business. And we welcome Mark Nesbit here this morning. Who is the VDOT Warrington Residency Engineer. And he's going to provide us a quarterly report.
Good morning, Chairman Dill and Council Supervisor members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here for the quarterly update. It's been a few months since I've been here. But everything is going fairly smoothly. I can't say that highway maintenance is always perfect. But we continue to do the best we can with the resources we have. I believe everyone has a copy of the most recent monthly report. One of the major projects in the county that is in development is Route 3, McDevitt Drive Roundabout. That is still, you know, we're still in design phase. We will be going to right-of-way phase here later this year. And we're still looking for an October '24 add date, which is, I guess, what, about 16 months away? 16, 17 months away. So that project's still moving along. And look forward to that project getting built. And also, rural rustic projects that the county has been good to put into play with their revenue sharing program are moving forward. They're on schedule. We are, you know, we're taking them out in an orderly fashion. And, you know, by the end of this year, they should almost all be under construction. And we look to close these out here in the next six to 12 months. But they are all moving forward. So we will hopefully be done with the current slate of rural rustic projects that are underway. We're also in our paving season. And we have, we had, let's see, I mean, had a number of miles of road being paved. The update, if I get the sheet with the paving schedules on it. The Dutch Hollow Road has been completed. Three miles, over three miles of Dutch Hollow Road is complete. Mountain Run Lake Road has been completed. And we're still waiting on, and also Carricko Mills Road has, half of that, about three miles of that, has been completed. And then we have a small section of Carlton Drive, which is off of Lover's Lane, is still yet to be completed. And then we have Twin Mountains Road, Route 647. And Batner Road, 647, are both slated for surface treatment. And those are still yet to be completed. From our maintenance sources, we are, we have completed our first mowing cycle for the primary route. We do mow, we do have three cycles. So we've completed our first. We typically complete our second cycle by Labor Day. And then we typically schedule the third cycle towards the end of the fall when we're about ready to have the first frost of the year. And we've also, we're about 30% complete with our first secondary route mowing cycle. And we hope to be complete with that by the end of this month, too. So we continue to, you know, to do the best we can with our gravel road maintenance and our, you know, response to customer complaints. We have a pretty low pending. So we're pretty much doing a pretty good job of staying on top of the customer work requests that we're getting. And we try to respond to them as quickly as we can with the resources we have. We are also in the process of, we have three, excuse me, four studies in the county that are getting underway. Once, let's see, two studies are the, we're actually in the process of studying. Let me get that up here. Route 1529 Business, which overlaps, it's a STAR study, which overlaps the town and the county from the roundabout there going out towards Brandy Road, all the way out to 29 Interchange. So that's a good long stretch. That's a STAR study, which is a pretty comprehensive study. And we hope to come up with some potential projects that will be eligible for smart-scale funding in future years. And we're also doing, and a STAR study is a VDOT-funded study. We have pipeline studies, which are similar, but they're funded by OIPI, which is under the Secretary of Transportation's office. And we're doing a study of Route 29 Business, which is Madison Road, which is from Germana Highway down to the 29 interchange south of town. And that is within the town of Culpeper. But that will be a study that, I mean, a study that improvements come out of that, that will certainly impact county residents as well. But that's, that's pretty much what I had for as far as updates. And I'll be willing to answer any questions that the Board members may have.
First, thank you. I heard that you and others went and visited Reva Road and drove up and down it, looked relative to improvements that we're considering. Thank you for being out there and look at it. It sounds like it was a good meeting. In terms of, I saw something just off of Reva Road on Ridgeview Road, 607 in Madison County, that I hadn't seen before. It appeared that they had put asphalt on top of a tar and chip road. Are you familiar with that? And is that something we've looked at doing in Culpeper?
I have not looked at paving, putting plant mix on top of, on top of chip seal roads as a matter of practice. But if the particular situation, that that was the correct thing to do, you know, certainly we would consider it. I'm not sure what the circumstances were on that particular road.
That road is pretty similar to the other ones around there. So the 715 Duncan Trail, the 608 Oakland Road, 607, kind of are going around the block in that part of the area. And just the feedback I've had from the constituents is they appreciate the work that was done there. So I don't know if it's something that could be looked at. But there are some tar and chip roads that, if that's an inexpensive alternative, I mean, whatever can be done, we very much appreciate. In that case, Ridgeview Road was done well. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I will certainly look into that.
Great. Thank you.
So I have a question on the Ira Hoffman Traffic Signal Study. With the additional housing development going in just up from there, across from Success Drive, and as well as the LifePoint Church going to be building off of the Success Drive, that is starting to look like it's going to turn into a six-way intersection. And is there, are you guys looking at that in perspective to this Ira Hoffman study with North Ridge Boulevard for pedestrian traffic? Or is that not on the radar yet?
Yeah, we are, we're looking at all that. We're, you know, like you said, there's a number of developments ongoing. And it seems like they all have their traffic studies that are associated with those developments. And we're looking at all that. There is a sidewalk project that was being proposed for that area for either revenue share or transportation alternatives. We're still, still looking at that to make sure that, you know, we're getting the right segment and it's going to be the right project. But we are looking at all that and trying to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts and that we're trying to, you know, because there are some improvements that the developers can do as part of their projects. And we certainly don't want to do something on the public dime that the developers can do on their dime. But that, yeah, that's all, it's a kind of a moving target in there because of all that's going on. But we are involved pretty, you know, daily or weekly with county staff and actually town staff as well up and down that corridor, making sure that we do the right things at the right time.
Okay. And then my other question is about on Greens Corner Road, right by the high school, where they were asking for a stoplight into that industrial park area to aid in their development with that. And it was deemed that it, that a stoplight couldn't go in there. What are the reasonings behind not allowing the developers to put forth that stoplight to be able to allow that area to be better developed?
Well, they did a traffic study as part of their development. You were talking about it, Poor Farms Road.
Mm-hmm.
And the developers, engineers did a traffic study. And it did not, you know, we have to, a traffic signal has to meet traffic signal warrants. There's a process they go through. And then the traffic signal study did not, did not meet all the required warrants for a traffic signal. It just wasn't justified based on the traffic volumes that were, that were part of the study.
But that was just for the gas station. What about for the rest of the development in that area? I mean, I hate the fact that we always have to have a problem before we're allowed to have a solution for it. We can't pre-plan for the development that we know is going to go into that area, to the fact that we have to wait until there's accidents and different things like that before we can actually do these types of things. Meanwhile, the developer's willing to pay for it. I'm wondering why we're not looking a little more forward?
Well, I mean, I certainly understand that. And it is, it is a, you know, I guess it's, I won't say a problem, but it is something that comes up. Do we allow the traffic signal to go in before it's actually warranted? Unfortunately, the way our rules are set up, or the guidance are set up is the signals have to meet an existing traffic volume. We can't put a signal in for future warrants. Or, you know, for something that may happen in the future, or may not happen in the future. And also, the main, one of the main reasons the signal was requested was for pedestrian traffic in the area, potential pedestrian traffic. And so we asked them to look at pedestrian, a pedestrian signal there. And that would be, you know, it felt like that that would be more appropriate if that was the concern, was pedestrian traffic. And we still haven't gotten the design back or anything showing a pedestrian signal at that location.
Yeah, that wasn't what they were warranting for. They, it was left turns out of the gas station that they were trying to get the signal for. And then the other thing that's been brought up with a couple of, with an application on McDevitt Drive, the rumor of a roundabout at East Chandler and Win Frank Turnage Moves. And then also, there was mentioned a roundabout at Germana. And then we have the roundabout at McDevitt and Three. I'm just wondering, why are we looking at to have three roundabouts within a mile of each other and then not doing anything at Knolls Mill and Kaiser Road? I'm just wondering what the plan is there? And why are we talking about roundabouts at East Chandler and McDevitt? And not looking at Knolls Mill?
Well, I personally just found out about the intersection at Chandler and McDevitt just over the weekend. I didn't know that that was even something that was coming up or that was being proposed. We were asked to provide, to look at what a roundabout might look at, might look like at that intersection. So that, I think it's, there's some re, the property is being repurposed or for a future development. And we were looking at what, how much right-of-way would they need to dedicate for a future roundabout there? But there's been no, traffic studies have not been completed to warrant a traffic signal or to show that, I mean, a roundabout or show that a roundabout would be, be the appropriate application at that intersection. So that is, it's very early in the, in the process for that intersection. And I'm not aware about any other roundabouts in that area.
Okay. Because it's just been mentioned a couple of times. And I was concerned with the fact that we're looking at East Chandler and McDevitt. But yet, we have an even bigger problem at Knolls Mill and Kaiser Road. So I just want to make sure that we're prioritizing that portion of highway appropriately.
And I know the Kaiser Road and Knolls Mill is being looked at as part of the Armstrong development. They are doing studies at various intersections in the area determining what the long-term, you know, impacts to their development on that intersection are. So we'll, you know, we should be getting that here soon.
Okay.
It'll be a process in itself.
All right. Thank you.
Mark, I have a question about Blue Ridge and Evan Street, the roundabout that's going there. You familiar with that?
Blue Ridge and...
With the town?
Oh, it's part of the 522.
Yes.
Diet, road diet.
Yeah. It's starting this week. And its proposed construction timeline is for two or three months for that area to be closed down and detoured out. I'm hoping that won't go into four or five months. I mean, I don't know if you have any foresight with construction or not. But two or three months? Just hope it doesn't linger into four or five months before we can get that roundabout in place and construction completed.
Right. As you know, that's a town-administered project. And we are, you know, we're funding that project, but it's administered by the town. But we are working with the town. And we communicate fairly frequently with them on the project.
Right.
And so I will try to stay engaged in that. And if something does look like it's going to extend that construction any longer than what it's being proposed, we'll do what we can to help limit that.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have just one quick comment. Mark, not to belabor the point that Ms. Gugino brought up about Poor Farm Road. But when that application comes forward, and you had mentioned earlier that we'd rather see these type of improvements be on the developer's side versus the taxpayer's side. And when I found out that that was a sticking point with that applicant coming forward, which is developing the gas station, you know, we had gone through to get the water and sewer extended across Greens Corner Road. And I would hope that, you know, the engineers with VDOT would kind of take a bigger picture that, yes, right now, this one application and the amount of traffic that's there today does not warrant a traffic light. But when you start bringing public utilities to an area, you've opened up a whole new gamut of possibilities. And that, for one, right across from where that gas station was going to go, a national gas company has made a regional headquarters there. So I can see the improvements starting in that area. But now that this has been pretty much shut down, you know, it really, it really hurts the economic growth of the county when these things take effect. And I would hope that VDOT, going forward, would consult more with, with the Board on, you know, get some more input on these things. You know, especially what we were talking about with Ira Hoffman. I mean, you know, we've had school board members that are, you know, really up in arms about safety with this. But yet, the numbers don't support what needs to be done. So in a nutshell, I just hope going forward that we can have a better dialogue between VDOT and the Board on what we're projecting is going to happen once this one application is fulfilled and utilities are provided. We can see that area, you know, pretty much exploding. So it really hurts our development when these things are shut down.
I understand completely. And we'll do, you know, I'll do everything I can to, a lot of these decisions aren't mine specifically. But I'll do everything I can to help, you know, make that communication happen.
... decisions that are made that could be in the interests of Culpeper County or in the interest of economic development rather than some random spreadsheets that some unaccountable body somewhere is creating?
Well, I mean, we just need to stay in communication. I really can't answer that question other than we, you know, there are engineering criteria that we have to use in these things. But...
How do we change the criteria to make it where it works for the county?
Well, as far as traffic signals go, these are federally established criteria for traffic signals. And we're obliged by state code to follow these criteria.
Okay. I'm familiar with other areas where traffic signals have gone in that seem to have been proactive. So I don't understand how that can occur in some areas but can't occur here. And I guess if it's a, that we're following state code, then the challenge is with our state legislatures. So...
Well, I can't speak for what is happening in other jurisdictions. But I, I mean, I'm certainly open to having that discussion on, you know, opportunities to, and what, what can we do and to help with those, what you're speaking to and what Mr. Bates was, we've all been speaking to. Some of these things are not at my level to decide on. But I would be happy to, you know, facilitate or engage others in the discussion with whoever the Board wants to put towards that with VDOT. And we can have those discussions.
Yeah, I like that idea.
I mean, we want to be a partner with you. We're not, we don't want to be an obstacle to economic development. We know that's important. It's important to all of us. And so I'll be happy to do what I can to facilitate those discussions and see what comes out of it.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Okay.
Okay. Up next is the consideration for ratifying the remaining funds, appropriating the remaining funds for ARPA Act funds. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. What we're requesting this morning is to go ahead and designate the remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds to some certain projects to make sure that those are all appropriated and in place. I want to emphasize that doing this this morning doesn't lock you in necessarily. I think you can still move these funds around at a later date. But at this time, of the approximately $10.2 million we started with, there are $2.4 million roughly that are not designated. And this morning, we are suggesting that the Board approve appropriating the funds in the amount of $35,000 for equipment for EMS. $555,000 is to be designated for the additional parking lot at the sports complex. But I do want to emphasize that that is a bid number we got a while back that's not being awarded. And we do have some volunteer work and donation of things. So we expect that, that price to come in much lower than that. But that's the number we're using for, for accounting for this purpose. And then the remaining $1.8 million, we would propose to put in the capital improvements plan in the roads line. And there are budget supplement sheets that are being requested for approval on Board docs.
Thank you, John. Questions, comments?
I move that we approve ratifying the appropriation of the remaining funds as suggested by the county administrator and as the sheets show.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Okay. Next up is John's airport issue that we added to the agenda initially.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is kind of an end of the budget year cleanup item and it is something that we have experienced in the past. When the airport budget is developed, there's a projection for the cost of fuel for avgas and jet fuel, and there's a projection for the revenue that would be generated by those sales. At this time, throughout FY23, we have purchased more fuel than we budgeted for and we have sold more fuel than we budgeted for. So including what we project for the rest of the month of June, we are asking for an additional appropriation of $183,275. And every bit of that will be offset by the sale of fuel both throughout the rest of this month plus the overage in revenue that we've already generated, which is approximately $145,000 at this point. So this isn't costing us more money. It's just a function of trying to project what fuel prices will be and how much you'll need to buy is based on how much you sell. But no matter what you do, you're earning money from the sale of fuel. So the request again is for an appropriation of $183,275.
Thank you, John. Questions, comments? Or entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the appropriation of $183,275 for the purchase of fuel.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have one item of old business. The board will discuss and consider approving an agreement between the county and Contour US LLC to act as a foreign trade zone operator within the county's FTZ. Brian Rothermell, our Economic Development Director.
Good morning, Board.
Good to have you here, sir.
Thank you. Good to be here. I just want to give you kind of an update because the foreign trade zone does not come up frequently. Just give you a little background of this. Contour did apply to be part of Foreign Trade Zone 185, which is, the grantee is the County of Culpeper back in October 2022. We went through that process. The board approved submitting the application to the FTZ board, which is through the Department of Trade. US Customs and Border Patrol inspected the property on January 23. They provided their guidance and issuance and acceptance of the change. And in February of this year, the FTZ board approved it. The next step is an operator agreement between the grantee, which would be us, and the operator, which is Contour. And once the operator agreement is approved and signed and the invoice is paid from the company, then we will submit a concurrence letter to Border Patrol and then they can begin the FTZ operation. Application fees that have already been paid, $2,500 was for the first fee, the concurrence fee, which is where we're at now, is $1,000. And then the annual fee that they're invoiced every May, which would be starting next year, is $7,500. We currently have one operating operator or one active operator in our zone, which is Merck, and they pay $10,000 per year. In the agreement, Contour is responsible for operating the FTZ, keeping the paperwork, filing an report, paying the annual dues. As the grantee, we have no day-to-day responsibilities for the zone, but we are required to file an annual report every March to the FTZ board. Our FTZ schedule, which we adopted late last year, sets all the fees and the terms in the operator agreement are based off of that schedule. We can change the schedule. We just have to give them proper notice in the future. And just one note, we agree not to advertise that Contour is part of our FTZ beyond our legal requirements to disclose. And this is a five-year term with a five-year renewal, and we can terminate if there's a breach of contract. That's it. Open any questions?
Okay. Questions, comments, or entertain a motion?
I move we approve the application in the agreement with Contour as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, I get to introduce a classmate of mine who I graduated with in 1975, Mr. Howard Lambert, who, glad to have you here today, sir, who does a lot for Culpeper and we appreciate what you do. And the board will discuss and consider approving a letter of support for a proposal from the Freedom Foundation to place a March to Freedom Memorial on VDOT property in Brandy Station. And I'm going to open it up for our county administrator first, John, to lead the discussion. Howard, glad to have you here, sir.
Well, good. It's good to be back. I'm a stranger. I've been here before. Certainly it's always a pleasure. So it's nice to see everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you've just heard, the Freedom Foundation is seeking to place a memorial on some VDOT right-of-way by the Brandy Station Park and Ride Lot. I believe they have been working on this for some time and are doing so in collaboration with the American Battlefield Trust. Initially, VDOT had asked the Freedom Foundation to seek county sponsorship of this, which I think brought with it requirements for maintenance, but that has since been revised so that the Freedom Foundation and its various partners will be responsible for all the maintenance and the county does not have to be a formal sponsor. But VDOT has asked that we at least provide a letter expressing that we have no objection to the location of the memorial in the county. And that is what Mr. Lambert is requesting this morning. I drafted a fairly simple, straightforward letter that is on Board docs that is proposed to provide to VDOT this morning.
Would you like to add to that, Howard?
Well, as was mentioned, we've been working this for some time. We've been working with VDOT. The Freedom Foundation formed in 2016. Even before that, we had suggested to VDOT. So we've been working in a collaborative fashion with them. Obviously, we're delayed because of COVID, but we want to make sure that it's something that's follow all the rules and regulations of VDOT. And we've been doing that. And so we're at the point now where we're moving forward to the next phase of it. And after this, obviously, we're going to go through the Department's historic resources, final approval. So we believe in working in a collaborative fashion. It's kind of why we're here today, make sure you're aware of what's going, what we're doing. We think it's a great thing because of the history of Culpeper. I need to tell you about Culpeper during the Civil War. But it's very part of the history of Culpeper to recognize officers and USCTs who served in the Culpeper area. Started doing 1863 and 1864 in the Overland Campaign. And that's where we're going to emphasize going forward. So once again, it's here to reflect recognition of the officers who led those men and also the men who were born in Culpeper. That's what the focus is for Freedom Foundation, what's going in the Brandy Station area. And as you know, we've got Chuck Lawton here from ABT. We're preparing for the National Park, well, not National Park, the State Park for the Brandy Station area. And so it all comes together in that location. And the reason why that location, because historically it's correct that they were there, the USCTs were there during 1863 and 1864 as part of the Overland Campaign. So that's why it's appropriate to have it there, that location. They guarded the train from Anasus down to the Brandy Station and for that part, you know, the wilderness and the rest of the history, as they say. So that's why that location is very, very important.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any questions or comments?
One minor comment. I ask that we date the letter June 6, 2023.
Okay.
Move that we approve the draft support letter with the date change as appropriate.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Let me say thank you. So, Conley, really appreciate it. And we'd be happy to come back to brief you prioritizing what's going on with the memorial site going forward. So once again, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next up. Board will discuss and consider awarding a contract to Norman Smith Architecture for Architectural and Design Services for the proposed public swimming pool at the Culpeper Sports Complex. Alan Culpeper and Andrew Hardy is here too.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. The County Procurement Office, we were tasked with going out and finding an architectural service to do the design work and a design bid build of the community pool at the newly constructed sports field complex. We went out for advertisement with a request for a proposal in January of this year. It closed in February of this year. We received five submittals. We conducted interviews, negotiation process during the month of April. And we come here today to make our recommendation to award a contract to Norman Smith Architects, Sperryville, Virginia, in an amount of $459,450. And this number is not to exceed that amount of money in the contract. In accordance with the MOU between the town and the county for the operations agreement, we were supposed to have a design contract, a design contract in place by July 31, 2023, and we're about two months ahead of schedule on that. And the construction contract should be in place only if not before July 31, 2024. I have Mr. Smith here today with Norman Smith Architects. If you would like to answer our questions, ask him questions. We'd be more than happy to bring him up. But other than that, I will take any questions that you may have.
When we were forecasting the cost of the pool to be, I think, just below $5 million, what did we anticipate that architectural services would be back then?
I believe, I think we were anticipating, and I could be wrong, but I believe, I want to say it was around $300,000 for the estimate of the architectural service. Now, this contract price does include, this is just for the architectural services, but it also includes the design, the bid in collaboration with county procurement and the contract administration of the pool. The contract also includes such things you will see in the memo of negotiations such as architectural, the design work, structural, civil, and landscape associated work with this.
So my bigger question, I guess, is do we still believe we're on budget or not?
Right now, I do. I believe we are on budget.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? Or entertain a motion?
Move for approval of the contract.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Like sign. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, the Board of Supervisors will consider a request by the owners of Tax Map Parcel Number 2742A for a waiver to the subdivision ordinance of the Culpeper County Code. Mr. Sam McLaren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, good morning, members of the board. I am not the owner of the Tax Map Parcel, but our office did receive a waiver application specifically for a family subdivision in this case. And the landowner is in the audience with us this morning. She's in the back there, Mrs. Fur. She did submit a proper application. They've owned the property for almost two years. Our subdivision ordinance requires five years holding prior to doing a family subdivision. So they're just shy of that, about three years. They did provide, in staff's opinion, adequate paperwork that was submitted to the board to demonstrate their need for family assistance now. They intend to subdivide a one-acre lot, thereabout, to their daughter, who will help be a caretaker for both, actually, Mrs. Fur. And you're welcome to come up, Mrs. Fur, and explain anything that you need to before the board. It does require a waiver specifically from the Board of Supervisors under 960, which the board needs to demonstrate or at least find acceptance of a hardship in this case. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any code questions or anything that Mrs. Fur is here and she can answer anything else, too.
Thank you. Thank you for considering my application. Do you have any questions or did you want me to explain anything further? My daughter is a lot of help with me and her. And actually, my granddaughter also, she's 15. They're able to help me during the day. My husband is, I believe, in the packet it shows my husband is 100% disabled. And so during the day, you know, we kind of, I can help him. He has PTSD with his anxiety. He helps me with my physical stuff going on. At night, he takes such a heavy regimen of meds and stuff. So if I have to wake, I usually have to call, you know, somebody else because waking him up from his regimen of meds is kind of difficult. So, but yeah, they have been such a good, like I said, we, as he said, we had just purchased a property two years ago and there's, as you know, there's five-year wait. So it would really help us out a lot, help our family and really be very beneficial to us if we could go ahead and let her. She does have small children and it's great that we have their grandchildren close by, but you know how like, it can be like little ones, you don't want to make them be not children and you don't want to, you know, sometimes it's hard, especially with his anxiety and stuff, to, you know, to be around little kids. So again, I thank you for considering our application.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comment today. Okay, any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm familiar with the area. It's on Reva Road at the base of Peace and Quiet Lane. Peace and Quiet Lane is actually a family subdivision itself that was created over many years where the McLeod's and many relatives of them still live there. I think it's consistent with the character and I support the application. I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver as requested by the applicant.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, committee reports. Supervisor Underwood.
Yes, sir. We have one motion coming out of Public Works. Hold on one moment here. Let me get to where we are. Yes, committee brings forward a motion to the board that staff be authorized to move forward with surveying and engineering of a potential new road connection from Friendship Way to the Pearl Sample AG Richardson Elementary School campus. Need a second.
Can I get a second on that? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Or entertain a motion?
We already have a motion.
I'm sorry, we haven't, we haven't. I'm just surprised we have no further discussion.
Well, if you'd like, this is for the initial engineering for the other outlet relative to the two elementary schools. And with this, we'll be able to go forward.
All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Okay. Okay, building and grounds. Don't believe we had anything for building and grounds. Rules, Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The committee brings forward a motion to the board that proposed amendments to the planning and zoning fee schedule be approved. And I'll turn that over to John or either Sam if they want to elaborate on the-
We got a, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, John?
I'm going to let Sam handle this one. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do believe that if the board wanted to move forward, this would require a public hearing as well. Is that correct, Sheila? Yeah. But just to kind of go over background, our fees haven't been amended or changed since 2018. So we're working on about five years. We did, I did take the opportunity and actually didn't do this too recently, did this a couple of years ago and then just looked at it again more recently. of years ago, and then just looked at it again more recently, and tried to really sit down to calculate the amount of staff time that goes into certain aspects of services that we provide. And so you're seeing kind of a run-of-the-mill increase, but not for everything. Would be an increase to potentially single families, as far as an ENS fee would be increased from 200 to 300. And I'm welcome, I'm happy to go through the fee schedule as proposed. We do have it posted on board docs there. It's, one thing of note, we did look at fee schedules kind of across at least the immediate area for adjacent localities. Not uncommon, but we do kind of fit right in the middle, you know, compared to, for example, Madison County or Rappahanna County, we're a little bit lower for our ENS fee, for example, going from 200 to $300 for a single family. Spotsylvania charges $1,300. So it's quite the difference. Those fees are largely based on time and processing. There are a couple of new fees. One would be 911 addressing fee. And then for subdivisions, street signs, street signs, we've never charged separately for those. A new street sign, for example, for a new road that's being built for a subdivision that's going to run the county around $300, so we're just trying to cover the cost of that. There are other fee increases, as you can see, as far as zoning confirmation versus a determination letter. Verification letters are relatively simple, but zoning determination letter can be very complicated and can involve quite a bit of time. So we have asked the board to look at increasing that fee. As Chairman, to the members of the board, you know, there are many ways the county can operate fiscally. I do think that what we have looked at as far as new development to come in, we do feel like our services are certainly valued, and we don't overprovide services by any stretch of imagination. And I do think that these fee increases will help get us a little bit closer to the true cost of services for our department, at least for new construction. There are many services that we provide that are not, you know, borne by development. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Any comments or questions, or entertain a motion?
I have comments and perhaps questions also. I appreciate the job that Sam and the crew in planning and zoning do. My outlook is a little different in terms of who should bear the cost. I don't believe that the landowners view this as services, meaning they don't go in and say, "Thank you for our ENS permit. Thank you for having to do all these different requirements." These, quote, "services" are landowner obligations that the county imposes on landowners. Therefore, I believe it's the responsibility of the taxpayer, in many cases, to bear that because the taxpayer elects us that in turn imposes these obligations. So I see Sam's exercise of saying, "Okay, what does it cost?" But if you go through and look at it, we're adding, I mean, it's now thousands of dollars in county fees in order to create a single-family home site, and we're increasing that significantly at a time that housing is unaffordable, and we're trying to have affordable housing. There are some that I agree with. So when you go through here, for example, if you need a new road and you got to have a road sign, fine, having the landowner pay for the road sign, the $300, great. On the other hand, the 911 addressing fee, if there are people on that road who have to change their address because the road now qualifies for a new address, I don't see, I see that as being part of county administration and not something that I would charge for. So overall, I personally would prefer a lot fewer fees, ideally no new fees other than the reduced chicken fee of $500, and would hope that we could see rules or the appropriate committee look at this again.
Ms. Chairman, I move that we advertise them. Let's get the public input on them. And I take issue with taxpayers paying fees for national housing development companies that are building houses in this county, just going as hard as they can go. I don't want to pay their fees. There's no reason for me to pay their fees or anybody else out here to pay them.
Yes, I agree that if it's national housing development, we should have differentiation. There were some areas, though, that we had differentiation based on acreage, et cetera, that we actually removed the differentiation. So we went the other way. But in terms of, I share Mr. Rosenberg's sentiment that I don't want to cover the cost of national housing companies coming in here.
I'd second Mr. Rosenberg's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign.
Aye.
Okay, I believe it's 5-1, Ms. Ellis. In favor of? Okay, Part B, Mr. Bates?
Mr. Chairman, again, the committee brings forward a motion to the board that proposed amendments to the building permit fee schedule be approved.
Just for, is this advertised for approval?
This will be advertised.
Okay, so you're bringing forward a motion that we advertise the adjustment for.
Second.
Mr. Ohr.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. I have a quick summary here that may help get through the weeds of this. As far as new fees commercially, I have a new re-roofing plan review fee of $125. Electrical new service and panel replacement of $125. That's plan review as well. Permit on mechanical rooftop units, for one, it's $125, and any additional will be $25 each. A change in commercial, R2 multifamily dwelling units, apartments and condominiums as such. The increase in the trade permits from $50 per unit to $100 per unit. And that would include the water and lateral, water and sewer laterals. Sales trailer, a new permit, $75 each. Generator increase from $125 to $150. And utility-grade solar panel with plan review and permit included, the fee changed based on contract, from contract amount to two cents per square foot of panel surface. In residential, a new permit fee or a new plan review fee, $350 for a master HVAC permit. This is for the track builders, which come to us with several models, and then within those models, they have several options. And a lot of times, that'll include additional square footage. So the mechanical sizing of the equipment changes. So the plan reviewer has to look at each model, each option. So this is a new fee. That's a one-time fee for that model. And then the permit, the mechanical permits can be issued turnaround any day or so. And this way, we're not reviewing each individual model at one time. And residential code modification increase from $75 to $100. So code modifications are when you cannot meet the letter of the code, but you can meet the intent of the code. So that takes research on my side. So if someone needs some assistance, that's what that fee is for. And that's it. That's all the changes.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Questions, comments?
I believe the fee schedule is appropriate and reflects inflation in this case. I mean, it's minor increases, but it seems consistent with what we need to do.
Okay. All right, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the Economic Development Director's report. Brian Ruffelmell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glad to be back. We have some upcoming small business support we wanted to discuss with you. This is from our strategic plan. This will accomplish Goal 2.1 and Goal 2.2, strengthening Beakulpeper locals' reach as well as developing a robust business assistance program. The first one is the business assistance. It's the SBDC marketing workshop. The Small Business Development Center from, or the Central Virginia Small Business Development Center provided programming at the Culpeper County Conference. They were our partner who worked for all, to get all of the speakers and the content that was given at the conference. Feedback from before, during, and after that event was very strong into marketing. So we decided, let's see if we can look at, we did marketing at C3, but let's see if we can do a kind of a deeper dive just in marketing, and they're able to provide us a three-hour marketing workshop. The agenda for this is, the first part will be grow your customer base, and that's to understand your business so you can present it properly to the audience. Then which marketing channels you should use, and which marketing channel, digital marketing channel brings which type of customer. And then finally, tools that will help manage social media that are free or low cost. An important note of the second one is it's not only digital, it's also what's non-digital marketing channels. Everyone always thinks about the social media aspect and try and understand that. There are still plenty of good old-fashioned marketing things that we, that businesses should not ignore. So that's be June 26th from 9:00, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Economic Development Center, and we'll have registration opening soon for that. In regards to our Beakulpeper Local program, the first thing that we did is we've refreshed the logo. We, what we've done is following current design trends of flattening it. It used to look like a button. Now it looks just more like the circle. It's a refreshed logo. This will be used in a variety of formats. You can see the four options that we have there, and we'll be transitioning to the refreshed logo as our current giveaway or inventory is given, such as at Culpeper Fest next Friday. So we'll be rolling that out here over the course of the next few months. Beakulpeper Local Week will be coming August 5th through the 13th. Participating businesses will be giving out Beakulpeper Local tote bags. And if you track purchases made or services received at participating businesses, completed punch cards, that customer will receive a unique Choose Culpeper t-shirt. And businesses that are interested to be a part of Beakulpeper Local Week should contact with them. That's all I got for you today.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Administrator's Report. John?
Just one item I wanted to gauge the board's interest in. You will recall that we had moved fairly far along on the agricultural preservation ordinance that the Planning Department had, had overhauled, and we put the brakes on that. It is now, I think, ready for prime time, so to speak. And so Mr. McLaren and myself wanted to see if the board had interest in setting up perhaps a work session to go over that in detail before it goes to public hearing. And then also, as a, as a side part of that, if you did have a desire to have such a work session, whether you'd like us to include a few other code-related items that the Planning Department is working on. They're currently looking at an overhaul of our PUD ordinance. And also, there's been discussion amongst board members at various times about amending the subdivision ordinance to make preliminary plan approval administrative so that they wouldn't have to go through a public hearing process. They are a ministerial act, and the board's hands are largely tied. So that is something that we wanted to have some discussion on as well. So I guess what I'm seeking is just some direction as to whether or not that's such a work session you'd like to have, and if so, stay tuned, and we'll coordinate. We don't have to set a date today.
I think it's worthwhile to look at those sections. And I don't know if there's appetite among the board to also look at the family subdivision requirements, but we've had several instances relative to the needing to wait five years where I'm unaware of us not waiving one. So perhaps discussing that also. Still keeping the requirement after you divide, but maybe looking at something different in front.
Okay. I think you have consensus, John.
All right, we'll work on a date with Ms. Ellis, and like I said, stay tuned. Thank you.
Okay, before I entertain a motion to go into closed session, I'd like to congratulate Supervisor Dur and his wife, Joanne, for their amazing Citizen Award that they recently received for their contribution volunteer work in the community. Yep, congratulations. Okay, entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into closed session as permitted under Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, A36 and 29, to discuss and consider the award of a public contract relating to real property located in the Cedar Mountain District for a utility waterline extension involving the expenditure and/or the investment of public funds where competition of or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the county could be adversely affected. Two, the potential purchase of real properties located in the Catawba and West Fairfax districts, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position, negotiating strategy, and financial interest of the board slash county.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you all for coming.